Next item on the agenda is roll call.
Dennis M. Clark.
Here.
Becky Curtis.
Here.
Julie Ossmans.
Here.
Roy Estes.
Here.
Gina Ree Pidler.
Here.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public participation. First thing we want to do is have a proclamation for the scouts and then anybody that wishes to address the council can come forward to the podium. You'll be given five minutes to address the council. Please leave your name and phone number. So if the scouts will go ahead and come up front, I'll meet you out there and we'll read the proclamation.
Whereas, the Scouts BSA have been at the forefront of instilling timeless values in youth since its founding in 1910. And whereas this national youth movement has made serving others through its value-based program. And whereas, the Scouts BSA is committed to helping millions of youth succeed by providing the support, friendship, and mentoring necessary to live a happy and fulfilling life. And whereas, the Pony Express Council of Scouts BSA and its many Cub Scout packs, Scout troops, and venturing crews are celebrating scouting's 112th anniversary. And whereas, there are many community organizations that make scouting available for thousands of youth members in our area who participate in the scouting program as a means of character building, citizenship training, and personal fitness. Now, therefore, I, Dennis M. Clark, Mayor of the City of Cameron, do hereby proclaim February the 6th, 2022, a Scout BSA Anniversary Week. Furthermore, I join with the citizens of this committee to express our appreciation to the Pony Express Council and the Scouts BSA for their interest in and dedication to America's youth. In witness thereof, I have hereby to set my hand and cause affix the seal of the City of Cameron. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody wishing to address the council on our first public participation?
Good evening. We would respectfully like to request the city to allow us to put our relocation sign back up. As you can see, sorry, not enough copies. It is a relocation. It does, is not an advertisement. It simply states, "We moved." We didn't close, we moved. We contacted the Historic Preservation Society after the last city council meeting to find out what we could do to put the sign back up, and their statement to us was, "We don't know what we're going to do about it yet." So with that, that's one piece. In the last week, we had six customers come into our store stating that they didn't know we moved. They see the barricades, they assumed that we closed. Thankfully, they asked neighboring businesses, "Where are they?", and they directed us to us. But those are the ones that asked. We don't know how many just drove on and didn't ask. Without these customer revenue, we can't pay our bills, we can't pay our employees. If we don't make a sale, we don't collect sales tax. If we don't collect sales tax, that's going to really hurt the revenue for the city to pay your bills and pay your employees. So we respectfully ask that we are allowed to put our relocation sign back up, and we would appreciate any speech of actions that that could take so that we don't keep losing money, both of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your comments. Okay, is there anybody else wishing to address the council? Okay, so we've done that to conclude our first public participation. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Are there any requests to move items from the consent agenda to the regular agenda for the scout week? So in concert, the court will now read the items on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the minutes of the January 18th, 2022 EDOC work session. Item B, motion to approve the minutes of the January 18th, 2022 regular session. Item C, motion to approve the minutes of the January 28th, 2022 special session. Item D, motion to approve a retail liquor-by-the-drink picnic liquor license for the Cameron Chamber of Commerce for their annual banquet, April 1st, 2022.
Thank you. Chair, we have came to motion to pass the consent agenda.
So moved. Second?
Let me do second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, against, and I want to hear the vote.
Motion carries. Four in favor, one abstinent. All right. Next item on the agenda is appointments and considering the appointment of city manager Rastus to the Region D Solid Waste District.
Yes, I can just make one comment, and that was Drew Bonrager had held that position as Director of Public Works until he resigned to take the position in private sector, and so I was going to volunteer to take that position until we hired our new public works.
All right. If there are no objections, we'll just go ahead and ask the manager to proceed. And thank you for taking all that extra responsibility. Do you need a vote on that, or?
We just, you have to, you just do like we normally do. I am there, Dennis M. Clark.
Okay. All right. I, Mayor Dennis M. Clark, would hereby appoint city manager Rastus to the Region D Solid Waste District Board. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say nay. Motion carries. Five in favor, zero opposed. Next item on the agenda is the city manager's report, manager Rastus.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And I have two things I wanted to talk about. The first thing was, I wanted to talk about the Great Northwest Wholesale Water Commission Pipeline. And in your package, I included a timeline. The USDA and our attorney and the staff and the commission worked together very carefully now to prepare what we think is a good timeline for beginning on the water pipe. Three things I'd like to point out is, one thing is, by the end of February, the attorney will have the owners and encumbrances identified, and that gives us a firm answer on everybody who owned the property, because over the time, some of them are still in question, owners have changed back and forth. And he will have that by the end of February. And then by the end of March, we will have two public meetings with the city of Maynesville and the city of Cameron, identifying what the new proposed water rates will be. And when we can get that back again, all of that's completed back to the USDA, and they will begin with the loans to us. And so we anticipate being able then to an issue notice to proceed to the contractors by the end of April. I know people have been waiting for a long time, but now I think we've got a pretty firm timeline, and though things may change, that's our plan now. The second thing I wanted to do is, I wanted to thank Tim Lyons and the Great Northwest staff for putting on a great presentation at the Capitol last week. They did a great job of putting it on, of getting to all of our legislators to have a couple of the great events, and then we were able to talk to each of our legislators about our priorities and make sure that everything that we're talking about, such as the Great Northwest Wholesale Water Pipe, is on their radar screen so they can all be aware of these different things that are going on and help us whenever the need may arise. They did a great job on that, and I'd like to thank Tim and that whole Northwest Committee for doing it. I think we've got 11 counties, 11 counties, Tim?
Less than 19.
19 counties who all participated, and so all of us were there to talk to our legislators. So it's a great event, and I think we've made good progress. I think that's it. Any questions? That would be it, Mayor.
Questions or comments for the next? I have a question, not any. Okay, I will go ahead and conclude the manager's report. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. We have previously postponed Bill 2021-33.
I want to just add that that's not going to be on the agenda until it's ready to come back. And we're going to reissue the matter.
Yes.
I think the clerk is tired of those.
I am. I'm tired of having them on.
So, okay, we will cross that one off. And the next item on the agenda is a discussion for the Code Board of Appeals.
Okay, thank you very much, Mayor. And I'm going to ask Tim to come up and talk about that. We have talked about this for a long time. We have a number of options, and this is for discussion only. We would appreciate any information you would be able to give us about how you'd like to proceed. And Tim will get through his staff recommendations, so I know there'll be a lot of comments maybe we can, you know, at least let him get through that before we begin to discuss the items.
Good evening, Mayor and city councils. Like Steve said, we're going to talk about the Board of Appeals. That is, it was adopted March 4th, 2019, or revised March 4th, 2019, Section 111 of the Property Maintenance Code's Board of Appeals. Basically, if you guys are not familiar with the Board of Appeals, it's a process that allows a constituent who feels like the code was not properly interpreted to go before the Board of Appeals, the Board of Appeals, we set that in place, get the ball in motion, meaning we set the hearing date, contact the Board of Appeals, set that date up for both the city staff and the constituent to basically state their case in front of the Board of Appeals. And in our code, in Section 115, it says the minimum board member shall be minimum three, but you can, you know, have five, seven, nine members if you would like. Next slide. The purpose of the Board of Appeals, like I said, is in place to allow constituents to contest a decision handed down by the code official. The code official would be myself, Paul, or our deputy city inspectors that retired regarding to the code. And then there's three concepts, three points of that, that the intent of the code or rules adopted, they're incorrectly interpreted, or the reason the code does not fully apply to whatever that situation is, or the requirements of the code are adequately satisfied by other means. Meaning like if there's a building code, and our code says you have to use this type of scheduled pipe, but, you know, in that particular situation, because of the area location, it would not work, then you can find alternative. But if that alternative is meeting the intent of the code, then that's where that would come into play. The process, like I said earlier, will allow the constituents and city staff to go before the Board of Appeals, basically to state their case, present their evidence, you know, talk about what the discrepancy is. And the Board of Appeals takes all that information, listens to that information, and makes a decision on that. The Board of Appeals do have the authority to reverse a code official decision, whether they did not interpret the code properly, or if they are explaining to the constituent that, hey, our staff is right, you know, this is what the code actually says, and this is how it should be interpreted, this is what the intent of that code is for. It's not to, it's just like a judge, you know, basically without the legal judge. Next slide. The Board of Adjustment, I think a while back, we had talked to our Board of Adjustment members to see if they'd be interested in being a servant as a Board of Appeals, and they agreed to do that. The Board of Adjustment is made up of five members. The Board of Adjustment, their actual duty is to listen or, you know, listen to people who are requesting barriers from the code, you know, you've got to prove a hardship. So they are familiar with the codes and everything. These are the options, you know, by using a Board of Adjustment, which is a five-member board, or using a hybrid Board of Appeals, which consists of five members and two additional, or however many members you guys want to add to the board. The other option would be selecting an entirely new board. I think we all know that, you know, trying to get volunteers to serve their positions and serve on boards has been quite a challenge, whether it was on Main Street, Planning and zoning park board. The other option is to change the code and remove the requirement of a Board of Appeals, which I don't think, I mean, that's not my suggestion to do that. By doing that, you're taking away the opportunity for someone to go before the appeals process and be heard. Next slide. How will the board members be selected? Recommendation by the Board of Adjustment, if you guys were to choose a Board of Adjustment to take on that extra duty, they will, you know, basically go through the process. Somebody submits an application. You guys will get a copy of the application along with the board as well, and they will basically select them or, you know, make a request for their recommendation to that board, or you guys can do the whole process of selecting from the volunteer group. Next slide, please. Again, my recommendation is use the Board of Adjustment as a Board of Appeals because they are familiar with the codes. The Board of Adjustment, they deal with the zoning codes, the property maintenance codes, the building codes, so they have that knowledge and experience to interpret the code properly. You know, another one positive upbeat for having a Board of Adjustments to do this, they are an existing board, and they have the experience and knowledge to do it. You know, if you guys decide to go to hybrid, that would give another set of eyes on the board to be able to listen in and, you know, make their comments and decisions as well. Next slide.
I think that's where we are. What I'd like to do now is ask Mike O'Donnell if he would come up. Mike, are you here? Mike is the chairman of our Planning and Zoning Commission, serves on the Board of Adjustment. I've asked him to kind of summarize what the board might feel and their position on this subject.
Okay, same here. Back several months ago, probably a year ago, the Board of Adjustments was asked if they would serve as Board of Appeals. That board took quite a bit of time to think that over. That particular board does deal with the codes, knows the codes, property maintenance codes, zoning, those type of things. They know all of that. It's a five-person board. The Board of Adjustments is equates our judicial board. Their decision, basically, if the Board of Adjustments is a final decision. Okay? Voting there on Board of Adjustments, there has to be four votes, either for, for, or against, to actually pass one, where you remember. I know this board would be different in the way it would be set up, we're just looking at members, okay? The Board of Adjustments thought about that, like I said, for quite a bit of time. They decided that they would be honored, honestly, to do that, to be those five individuals that sit on the Board of Appeals. I would not recommend, five is good. I would, you know, we always want to do an odd number because of voting, so I would probably not recommend anything within seven. When you get more than that, it tends to get kind of chaotic and vote and things of that nature in discussion. But the Board of Adjustments felt like that they could make very good decisions. Actually, you know, they're just looking to see if the codes have been interpreted properly on both sides, from the customer coming in or the city staff, of trying to apply the rules, regulations, and the codes. That's what their duty would be, looking at all the codes and throughout their decisions. I can tell you by sitting on that board, and the reason I do that, because the Board of Adjustment requires a member from planning and zoning to sit on the Board of Adjustments, and I've sat there just as that one person representing planning and zoning. So there's a cross, there's a lot of cross-training, a lot of cross-information that goes back and forth. That board determined that they can make good decisions, they've been used to making good decisions, and have had a good reputation, the boards that we have now and have had for quite some time. Actually, like I said, it takes four votes, and we normally always have five board members there at every meeting, so that's sometimes difficult to get at meetings. Anyway, that would be the Board of Adjustments' recommendation. If this council so desires to go ahead with the Board of Appeals, could the Board of Appeals, the Board of Adjustments, to oversee it? If you want to integrate two more people and go further than seven, that would be your recommendation also. Any questions, I think?
Mike, thank you for that. But you've talked about using the Board of Adjustment as the Board of Adjustment, and you've talked about the hybrid by adding some more people in. Would you give us your opinion of what might be a third one, and that would be using an entirely new board?
Yeah. As Board of Adjustments, as we talked, as the Board of Adjustments was making that decision as to whether they wanted to go forward or not, it takes a long time to ever get wrapped around the codes, and everything is out there, through planning and zoning, property maintenance code, all that. And the board that we have, the Board of Adjustments, is very familiar with that. It's taken a long time for those individuals to learn that. We're continuing to learn every meeting we have, there is no doubt about that. But doing a complete new board to us would have been a little bit chaotic, maybe, to start with. Not to say that decisions can't be made, because we would never say that, but to make it more organized and make it more uniform to start, we felt like that the Board of Adjustments could do that in a very positive way. And then that's where we came back and said, you know, integrating maybe two new members to make a total of seven would be maybe beneficial. Because, I mean, at some point in time, we're to start, you know, kind of moving out, so we just need to be able to come in and learn. So.
Okay, good. Thank you. And for both you and Tim, we're ready to answer questions and with like your comments. I think that the first thing is, if you're asking the board, do you want to have a Board of Appeals or amend the decision board adjournment? Two, if you want to have a Board of Appeals, what do you want to consist of? And then three, how would we like to appoint your members? And we welcome your comments on that. If we can reach a decision, I can move forward, or we can continue the discussion, it's up to you. Thank you, Mayor.
Are there questions or comments?
Why this question? Are the codes written in such a rapid interpretation, as it is on?
Well, let's talk to Tim or Paul, if you'd like to answer that.
Well, any time you read a code, anybody can interpret it a different way, or a different way. Whenever you're dealing with the codes and reading the codes, anybody can interpret it a different way. It's the people that have the experience and knowledge of what the intent of the code is meant that can look, see through that and understand it. You know, like when we go out and try to explain to somebody about, you know, X, Y, and Z, they may not pick it up, but, you know, we try to educate them in a way to where they can understand it. And sometimes people come around and, you know, understand the code and see it through our eyes. But, you know, interpretation is, it's anybody's interpretation, but the code official has a final say, or, you know, they can go through the appeal process to get that another centralized on the code.
I'll give you an example of that. I don't mean like this to mean to be critical, but rather this to be descriptive, and that is a lot of stuff on someone's front porch. For one person, maybe that may seem like junk, but to another person, it may seem like those are family heirlooms. So which decision you come down to, so if there is some question, and so the code, of course, the officers have to use some judgment, and the people who may get a letter about that, they may have some question about that, and so the board would be a way of adjudicating that. And then the inspector who also gets information about what, how really they should do that in the future, where are those lines drawn?
I'll give you another example, like, and this has happened before. You know, I can read the code, and I read it several times, and I would go to somebody like, Paul, say, Paul, read this, and what do you say, or Julie, read this, what do you get from this? So it's the ability to communicate and discuss the code and get an understanding of it, because that's the end goal of it.
Well, it seems to me, Mike, there's a lot of interpretation, and maybe they're not written very well.
And that could be true. I mean...
That's one thing, from a board, is that it's going to tweak, from what, one of the reasons I believe that are special, what we, what that was put in, was to tweak the codes as well, because if one same code kept coming up all the time, then, you know, then there's a problem with the code, and when you revisit it.
Yeah.
Correct, exactly.
Will the Board of Appeals be the last, the last in process? I mean, you've talked a lot about when they come and talk to you guys, and you try to work this out, and you what, what you can work this out. Is it after all of that, that it goes to the Board of Appeals, or can it go to the Board of Appeals anymore?
It would be afterwards. I mean, there's a process that you have to go through, but like, we always encourage people, whether they're asking for barriers or Board of Appeals, you know, we give them that option. You know, it's not us versus them, it's just getting another set of eyes on the issue and making a decision. If they prove us wrong or prove our staff wrong, we don't take it personal.
Yeah, the way the current ordinance reads is in place, is it says that the board shall modify or reverse the decision of the code official only by a concurrent vote of the majority of the board. But this does say that the board could modify or reverse the decision to the code official. I think that's it, unless somebody, I guess, wants to take it to the Court of Appeals.
And even with me personally dealing with planning and zoning, I take stuff from them all the time, and they rip it apart. I mean, I mean, it's a good thing, because you got, like I said, you got another set of eyes looking at it. I may have not seen something or thought of that, and they do a good job of explaining to staff or somebody that didn't agree with it, so, and then once they open their eyes and say, oh, now I get it. So it's, like I said, we don't take it personal, it's just a opportunity for people to present their case and, you know, listen to the board and go from there.
So what you're saying is that after they've got the citation and...
No, you get the letter first. Well, let me back up. Our new process philosophy is to go out and try to make contact with that person, and then, you know, try to work with them, and then give them however much time they need, as long as it's reasonable to obey the violation. If they don't get it from there, or don't do it, fail to do it, then we start the process of sending a letter where you say, it's official, you got until umpty, umpty, umpty to get this taken care of. If they don't get it taken care of, you know, they can say, hey, I want to appeal this to the court.
Is that the time they would do that?
Yeah, before it goes to court.
Okay. But that's not the way nobody flies.
Yes, correct. Yes.
So, let me quote the, let me quote the code for you, because I've read many, many pictures of it over the years. It says, "You need to keep your yard in good condition." But what is good? There should not be junk or debris. But what is junk and debris? Well, you have no, you have no qualifications for that. You don't have a list of what is junk. Rocks. I have rocks in my flower beds. But at times, I had rocks in the yard. It just kind of depended on what happened that day. The problem with the code was, it's extremely vague, and when you were getting a letter in the mail, it was very threatening, and that's the first contact you had with the city. That was extremely upsetting. And then when you had to call someone, and they were trying... That was extremely upsetting. And then when you had to call someone and they were trying every single way to make sure that their point was right. And the, then you would get a ticket, because you had argued with them. And then your next step was to go to the judge, who was hired by the city, and the prosecutor is hired by the city. And there's no point of you getting an attorney, because the cost of the attorney is probably a bit more than the ticket. Unless you're like me and you get five hundred dollar tickets at a time. Because you can get multiple, you can get multiple tickets at a time. Yeah, there was rocks, there was debris, there was weeds, so, uh, let's get a, let's get all of them. And then, I, I, I served six months of probation for weeds. Not weed, wheat. I had, I was just on six months of probation for weeds. Because I had a lawyer that, because I had five tickets. So I got this, no, it was seven, seven tickets. I had seven things on my contract. So he got that down to where if I spent six months and I was okay for six months, and after six months, that would be over. Or if I was not, if the yard was not acceptable, then I would have a five hundred dollar fine. You know, and this is a point in my life where I was able to pay fifty dollars a month I paid. I had times, times when I was having trouble paying my rent bill. So, you know, and this is the kind of thing that happened, and I had a list of thirteen people that had come to me when I started complaining. They said, this is what's happened to me, this is what's happening to me. I wrote down every single thing that they said. Most of them were elder. So, yeah, but if you have a code, Board of Appeals, I really think that it would help to at least buffer a little bit of that before the person had to go to court. As I said, court.
So, so how does it work if they get a ticket and they want a Board of Appeals? Immediately? Yeah, how does that work? So they, they got a ticket, but so much should be done, and then they're gonna go to court. How, how, how does that fit in?
Remember when I said earlier, we go, our, our new philosophy is to talk with them first, and then contact them, give them time without needing to start the paperwork to.
Right, but, okay, let's talk about when they do get the letter.
Yeah, uh, well, there's, you already have the ordinance that says that. And what it says is the application, uh, for the appeal, and it says that, uh, uh, you can appeal it, provide a written application of the appeal. It's filed within twenty days after the, the decision, notice, or order is served. But within twenty days after they get the letter.
Are you gonna put that in with the letter?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, good.
I wanna back up just a minute, because you said we're gonna give them reasonable time.
Yeah.
Who decides what's reasonable?
Uh, it's, it's up to each individual, you know, like.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
Who just, okay, so you're saying they get to decide what's reasonable?
Yeah, you know, if it's something small.
My big, the inspector.
The inspector, the inspector. You know, we ask people, you know, how much time do you need? If they say, I need, you can give me thirty days, I can clean up, we're not gonna ball hit that.
Okay, but is there gonna be some consistency on that? No?
No, because they, the situation was different.
The, the Board of, the Board of Appeals could be giving the add some consistency to that, you know, it may be, it may be thirty days to, to clean up the yard. But it only may be fifteen days to mow the lawn.
In my experience with doing, uh, former Board of Appeals, they do, uh, set a timeline. Uh, if they were, if that person was found to be in fault, they would say, we will give you twenty days to get this evaded. If not, we hire a contractor to come out here and do it at your expense.
I think Mike would normally wanted to also help answer that question. Mike?
Yeah, if I could, maybe I'll say. Being on planning and zoning, in fact, so years ago, the policy the city was, on-site plan reviews. Uh, that was normally done by city staff, uh, around the conference table, that we never went to planning and zoning. But over time, this, this what happened was, there was, there began to be disputes between the developer, city staff. And it kinda got to be a he said, you said, they said type situation, okay? So in order to try to curtail that and make everybody on the same playing field, that site plan review then came to planning and zoning. Number one, it gave a second set of eyes. I can guarantee you, when that comes to me for a site plan review, I'll go through it with a fine tooth comb and find anything I possibly can. So it's a developer, maybe, and, and it's, you know, it's not intentional, it's just something that happens, okay? They forgot, they didn't get it there, wasn't quite right. If I caught that, if city staff didn't catch that, I let city staff know, we worked and we got it changed. But what actually happens with that, when it comes to planning and zoning, that goes into the seven minutes. Okay, so as we're sitting here discussing it, that night at planning and zoning, and we said, hey, stormwater doesn't meet the criteria. Then that goes into minutes. So then that particular developer can't come back and say, hey, that's not what you said, Tim. And Tim can't go back and say, hey, I said this, because it's written down in the minutes. So it clarifies everything.
And you make sure that it's in the minutes.
Yeah, and I make sure it's in. Uh, but, but, but it. But, but it gives, it gives it an extra set of eyes. And, and it looks at the, in, in this case, the Board of Appeals, Code of Appeals would be looking at the same thing. Did, did city staff do the correct thing? Did, was this, was the, uh, information relayed to the applicant correctly or not? So that Board of Appeals is gonna be looking at that, okay? And I can tell you, for Board of Adjustments and planning and zoning, and Tim can back me up on that. If we see something that is not correct, that staff has approved, then, then we, we talk about it. And over time, we'll make those adjustments. And whether it be staff and codes that are not being ruled correctly, we'll catch that and fix it. Or if the applicant has not done the correct thing, we'll catch that and fix it too. So it's a two-sided, it's two-sided. And I, I, I do believe that this will help that basically contradictory back and forth. Because once it gets to that board and it goes in minutes, we can't say the next day that Tim said this and I said that. So all we have to do is go back and pull the minutes, and it's right there. So it clarifies it. It makes it fairer to both sides. And I think that's what we're looking for.
Yes.
Is to make it fair.
And the only time I had a problem with the idea of the Board of Adjustment was in God bless them all, and I don't wanna insult them, but they're all, but you don't have to wipe us. And the people that were getting the property maintenance problems were elderly women who were having lots and lots of financial problems. So I would like to see at, at least two other people on there who could possibly have some kind of a social service background. Who had some kind of passionate, kind of different people who are just having a hard time.
There is something I think we as a city can do for that. When, um, the city, when he finds that there's somebody that has that kind of situation, then I do know that there are, um, churches and things that can do some, a lot of things like.
Well, they had not been applied, you know.
Well, I, I, I want that to be a part of.
On the other hand, it is hard to ask for that.
Right, but if they got a ticket, they might, if they might, if it comes to them, say, hey, you know, you wanna help you. So, well, I would like to work on that, because I don't think you could actually do enforcement of your building codes and your nuisance codes without having the stock, something there for those who are likely you're talking about. So I, I want, I wanna see that. Not tonight, or I'm not talking about that tonight.
Again, I don't want to assault the Board of Adjustment, and assault the other people. But they, they don't have the same perspective as the little old lady in this house is following.
Um, do we wanna get started on how the board is gonna look?
Well, yeah, I think we've gotten the answer to the first question. I think that the, generally, you do wanna have a Board of Adjustments, you don't wanna change the code. So then I'm thinking maybe if we can go to the second question about what do you want the Board to consist of.
You mean hybrid or a, a standalone board?
Or the, or the Board of Adjustments.
Some people, every council actually do it, don't they?
Some, yes, some do. Yeah, yeah, yes, we didn't put that down as an option, did we?
Glad you didn't put that down.
Well, Mr. Adal, um, I think I know the answer, but I just wanted to confirm. Your recommendation is the hybrid, is that, is that correct, or is your recommendation the five member?
And, and honestly, I, I think would be fair would be the Board of Adjustments plus two.
Okay.
I, I, you know, I, I understand what you're saying. I totally do. I, 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 I wanna say that that Board of Adjustments or planning and zoning is going to be a hundred percent fair. Okay, they're gonna look at both sides, so I don't wanna ever say that they won't be, because they will be. And they, they will, they will make decisions based on the codes and rules and regulations. And taking into consideration some of those unforeseen things that none of us have thought about, okay? However, by doing that and, and adding the two more from the community, I think it, it makes it more powerful, honestly. Uh, I think those individuals will get an experience, uh, of working with a board. And, uh, it could be beneficial on all sides.
Okay, well, I thought that's what you were gonna say, but I just wanted to double check.
I do have a question, is that those two additional people with just your Board of Appeals questions and not, are you adding the Board of Adjustments?
No, just the Board of Code of Appeals. Yeah, and, and I, I believe that the Code of Appeals will probably have, take on a different, a little bit different way of doing business than the Board of Adjustments does. Uh, and as, as talking to Patrick at one time, it, it will take on a little bit of a, a different feel.
So wouldn't that be them operating in somewhat of a legal capacity? I mean, uh, it, it'll, Gina brings me a, uh, brings you a letter saying that we gotta fix this, and you decide that, no, this is correct, you lost your appeal. Do you have thirty days or go to court? I mean.
It'll, it'll be, it'll be in some sort of a legal capacity, just like, you know, like planning and zoning would be.
I.
It'll, it'll be a word of that, of that such, what I understood from Patrick when he said it's seven.
And if they go to like a citation, or something, or a, a citation goes to a citation and goes to court and the judge rules against it, they also could fill it at the higher courts. Which would happen, you would do that as well. But they're not setting any kind of fine or? No, no, they're just basically, okay, we're gonna interpretation of the code.
Yeah, so I would think what would happen is they could, they could change the, uh, ruling of the code before they could dismiss it. Or they could, uh, save it as hell, and if that meant that the person needed to have to fix their bacon, or they'd get a citation, have to go to court.
So move, let's do that.
No, 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 no.
Do you have more questions?
When you were, you were talking about, I think when you were talking about.
The hybrid.
The hybrid, that was what it was.
Okay, so we're just now talking hybrid or stand, standing, we're not talking about adding people right now. Or adding how many, just a hybrid or, um, a standalone? Is that what we're discussing?
Yeah, that's what, you, you, you do any of them, but maybe if you have a motion for a hybrid.
Yes.
A hybrid with two members, that's what I.
I want the two members.
You mean, it was just a hybrid, we had, we had talked about.
So first you wanna go out, and then we'll decide on the makeup.
Yes.
You have a motion, is that a second?
Okay, we have a motion to, uh.
What is the first motion?
To handle the, the Code of Appeals as a hybrid.
Yes.
Uh, is there a second?
A second?
Okay, move and second. Any discussion? See, now we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of motion, please signify. If I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, zero opposed. Okay, so the Code of Appeals will be a hybrid. Now, I guess the next question is to make up.
How many members? I know we have a recommendation, but it is a recommendation. I would like for us to discuss that.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, maybe one of the ways to start out is where you get these people to volunteer. The, uh, the city clerk has some from way back when, but.
Actually, I got a new one just today.
Okay, good. So, can you tell us how many? I don't wanna put you on the spot, but.
I have five qualified people. One of them is sitting on the council at the moment, but they could possibly be available at a later time. But I do have. I do have five applicants.
Five, okay, cool. I do agree that it needs to have, um, the Board of Adjustments know-how in it, I really do. I really do. We seem to have a lot of volunteers for that specific. Do you think we might wanna see if they are still willing to do, to be?
Yeah, some of these were, um, submitted late last summer, so they, we got to be on there in there immediately. Or what's going on with them, so we can.
Do, do, do we have to take a check with them?
So what would you like to see?
Well, my opinion is, I really like to see more than just two people be on that board, and I know it's gonna be like maybe herding cats. But at the same time, those four people would actually learn from the best. And since there's a lot on the Board of Adjustments that are, uh, you know, getting close to retirement age, it would be nice to groom some for good solid information in the future. And, um, and then if they decide that if they want to kind of fester, or not fester, but move on to their own, they, they, they might even decide, hey, guys, can you put this on? We're, we're, we're ready to go in and make this thing on it. And if they find out they don't like that many, then, you know, we could do that. But I do think that it's giving the people of the community more than two voices for that, and that's all. I'm good for the hybrid, but I really think it'd be more, that's just my, that's my.
Any other questions or comments?
Sorry, have we?
If you have that many people interested in you.
Sure. Are we gonna re, are we gonna re, uh, add our times?
I can.
I think that I'm. And the ones, if the one, I'm sorry. If the ones that are, have already applied, do they don't need to reapply, they can just reaffirm?
No, I'll just follow.
Okay.
So I, I would, I would lean the other direction, in that this, this is another thankless job. And I believe that boards should have a huge say in, in their makeup. Uh, chair, a long-term chairman is recommended seven. Uh, and to me, that's, that's a reasonable way to start off and then come back to recess any year, and see how, how it's working. Never done this to my knowledge in town. But I do think, uh, when you have a bunch of volunteers, it's really difficult. And we need to set it up in a way that they feel comfortable, that they wanna make it work. So to me, I would rather see the seven as, as the chairman recommended, but, uh, I'm only one of five. Any other comments? Is there any guess on how often this would?
As an unit.
As an unit.
I know, but I mean.
You know, I'll give you the idea, like, I think last year we probably had four Board of Adjustment meetings, Ken. So they, they don't need all the time.
You know, I meant like, for me, for Board of Appeals, like, for, how many people do you believe-ish would be asking to be a Board of Appeals?
I would say five or ten percent of the community.
It would be five or ten percent of the people that get a letter.
Yeah, I would say community, but the people that get the violations, notices of violations.
Which is.
All right. How many letters do you think you'd send out? Paul, how many letters would you send out in a month?
Uh, I would say, I think we had sixteen hundred when things were going strong, so, math for that, so you're, you're looking a hundred plus a month.
Okay, so if you took ten percent of that, I think ten a month, I think you'd start out, maybe I should give you a sub number.
I doubt, I doubt it'd be that, because I've worked in communities where they have a Board of Appeals, they rarely met. I mean, this were like serious issues where they, you know, they, they, they wanted to appeal the process or appeal the decision. But most, most generally, people agree, you know, in my experience, agree with our findings, and they, you know, we explain it to them, they understand it from right out the gate. So that's, you know, you're always gonna have the problem jobs that you just wanna, you know, test the law, so. I would say, if I give you an honest number, you'd probably say two to three a year.
Two to three meetings a year? Two to three meetings a year?
Mm-hmm, for board of appeals.
Yeah, but I'm not gonna learn them, I'm not gonna see much.
No, it's, it's like I said, it's like the board of adjustments, it's asking you.
But there, there might be more, depending on staff, and what staff does, I guess.
Our goal is not to write tickets, our goal is to educate. The more you educate, the less repercussions you have.
Okay, well, uh, does anybody want, is there, first, I guess, is there any other questions or comments?
Well, is there any reason to do anything besides finding out who's put their hat in and rings still, then we can move forward?
I mean, if we can take an interest in this, and decide this, then we can do this dead horse for.
Okay.
Chief?
Two, two years, I started talking to Steve about this two years ago, of course I approached three G S city managers, plural.
Well, would you be, oh, Chief O'Donnell, sorry. Would you be absolutely, totally against a four-member addition? I understand you'd have to change how your voting would be for?
I, I'm not gonna speak for me, I mean for the board.
Okay.
Yes, um, I would, board of adjustments, kids are gonna be a part of that.
Ken's here, Ken Osborn, he's the chair.
Well, I think to my own.
Okay, well, well, Mike, do you wanna throw out a number, just, just your opinion?
Two, two answers.
You know, in deference to the people that are pushing this on too. Because frankly, I, it says, there should be a board of appeals of at least three people. But since we don't think that we can train people, get them to speed and time, that we need to have these satchel while first, then, you know, we'll go with what they want. That's why, I'm sorry, I'm starting to sound very nasty, but.
I'm, you're saying seven?
Yes.
You're understanding.
If, if the worst thing is, if that is what they, if that's what it would take to get this done to not, and that's what we should do.
And I think if it's ten cases a year, why don't you bring it before the council?
Probably just decide, yeah, after, and after you decide, you don't, probably you really don't want angry string of people.
What, if, if, if there's a problem, or it's the way it's done, we're gonna be the ones to change it.
What about a hybrid where you pass the, the, whoever wants to be on it, plus a member from the board of adjustments?
That might happen eventually.
It would be wonderful if it was just me alone.
Maybe.
Well, I, I don't, no.
The only thing with me is if you've got a lot of people that are interested, the more people you put on there, the more, um, participation you get for volunteers. And a lot of times, we have trouble finding people to volunteer to be on these boards, and maybe they'll get a taste of this and that, and I'll get my volunteer to be on it.
And you have, you have a full amount, what if it's only two? In two years?
Well, it's too many. Bigger groups are harder to manage. It's harder to get form, it's harder to get consensus.
I mean, I think we could come back in a year after working with this and then get an informed decision, okay? How much time is it taking? Do we need more members? Are we at the right number? Uh, but to me, that would be a reasonable way to approach it. But, um, is there, does somebody wanna make a motion on, uh, how big this hybrid board should be?
I'll move it. We have a seven hybrid, hybrid board for the, for the G T O's.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so move and second. Any more discussion? Okay, and the motion on the floor is that a hybrid board will be made up of seven members. Uh, five of them will be at the board of adjustment, two selected from the community. We'll proceed to vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, zero opposed, opposed, and we have it.
It's a good way to start.
Right, yeah, I'm saying you can do it there and revisit it any year.
Okay, so we've, so we've been looking for two, okay, so we're gonna plan for by candidates, how are we gonna pick those?
Just like you gave me four.
Alphabetically?
We have actually been doing that. Like, I mean, when you say, just like when you bought, what do you mean by that?
Like, have you got any park board, or forgot how many boards we got?
The way, the way we did the park board was the park board itself made the recommendation, had it with the mayor, the mayor appointed the council to approve.
I think Mike had suggested that the board of adjustment made the recommendation, do you want them to have those, or do you guys wanna?
This is a new board.
This is a new board.
Right, but Mike had suggested.
This is not the board of adjustments, this is the board of people.
Right, but that's what, that's what was suggested by the board of adjustment, that, uh, they made the recommendation of new people. Do you guys not wanna do that, do you want us to make the, the appointment yourself, or the recommendation yourself?
Aye.
I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
I, I want, my, my preference is the board decides. I mean, the, now, it'll have to come to the council, the council will have to be in agreement. But this is gonna be a thankless board that has the potential, I think, to consume a lot of time. And I think they deserve to have a say-so on who they wanna recommend. Just like I think it should be the same thing with our board, any board, I think they get to, to have a say on who they would like to nominate. Now, we have to decide, but I think they deserve the opportunity to make a recommendation personally. That, that's the way, I would take that as a way, if I was sitting on one of those boards, I would go, but, uh, I'm just sitting here on one of those.
Well, perhaps the city council might be invited to listen to the board of adjustment, and maybe discuss this.
Can we give that?
No.
Well, I think we can, we can, if we have an agenda, we can. If, if, if freely you want to attend, if there are, we can just post an agenda, and you guys can, I mean.
It's either that or we pick four, correct? I mean, that's our only two options now.
But like you said, it's a new board, so.
Right.
I don't see it as a new board.
It is a new board.
Okay. 'Cause it's not gonna be the board of adjustments, that's what makes it a new board.
Are we still adding a board of adjustment?
Yes.
But we're adding boards of appeals to it, a two member, two.
Not to, okay. If we have a new board, we're adding the board, five of those members are gonna be from the board of adjustments, if it is a new board.
But I, I think what, I think what I'm saying is that we treat this board the same way we treat every other meeting in the selection process of committee members. Every board I think makes their right decision, but it comes to the council, the council.
But you're saying it's not a board yet.
Right.
That's right.
Right, no, we gotta start something.
Right, right.
And so, anyway, um.
Oh, turn that, turn this one down.
I, I've talked to Patrick about this a long time, I think Patrick said it's not a new board, it's usually extending the duties of the board of adjustments. That's the easiest way to do it.
I don't think we're gonna do that.
But, 'cause you're not changing actual board of adjustments.
Okay, so it's either gonna be the board of adjustments, and we're going to extend our duties, and we're gonna add two more members to it, or this is gonna be a new board, that's what we need to decide on, I guess.
Well, I'd say it's a new board, so regardless of, it's still gonna be a new board.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay. Or do we, do we do anything more, or have we gone far enough at the moment?
Let's find out how many applicants we're gonna have. I thought that that makes a difference, but.
I, I was gonna say, it's the same thing, because, uh, you know, if you come back and other people change their mind, and you got two applicants, well, your, your decision's kinda made up for you. If you got six, well, then maybe you gotta think about it, so maybe that would be a good time to, to postpone any more action until, uh, the clerk can come back and ask a number.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that?
Somebody?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, well, that, then that would conclude our discussion on the board of appeals. Uh, the next one that's been hanging out there for a long time is the discussion on the service line.
Okay, we've had, uh, we've had a presentation on this over the past year, different months, and now the exact stuff, uh, all put together, not going to someone I sent for you. Again, for your discussion, you don't have to make a decision tonight, but any guidance you've got, I would appreciate it.
We'll just take the next three hours and kinda really dive down in the. No, that, like, like, like Sid Minner said, we, we have been talking about this for a while, and they get a lot of information, stuff that we've already talked about, so we can, uh, we can go ahead and jump right in. Yeah, again, our current policy, as we all know, in the city of Cameron, the, the customer is responsible all the way from the actual corpse off the actual main to the house. Um, so that means that they are responsible for part of the portion of their service line that extends out in the right of way and possibly under the street or under, under a street. So, that, that's currently how, how it stands.
Okay, one thing I think we need to make real clear is that the way, uh, we're talking about this for any future issue, we're still talking about to the main with the property line, right, Jack?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And that'll come clear in a minute.
Yeah. Um, so, yeah, we basically had, had, you know, four different options that they would look at, uh, again. Keeping the status quo, keeping things the way they are with kind of an increased education. We've all identified the fact that there aren't enough people out there that understand what their responsibility is, and so therefore, we need to do a better job of, uh, educating them, um, and specifically when they come and apply for utilities, we can provide them that information to make sure that everybody moving forward now is aware of what they're responsible for. So that, that's the bare minimum of what we can do. Another option we've looked at, we looked at, uh, private homeowner policy, uh, adding on to existing homeowner's policy. Uh, we also looked at National League of Cities, uh, again, it's another private insurance, but it's an insurance specifically designed for, uh, service lines. And then we looked at the, the possibility of the city taking on responsibility, um, from the main up to the meter and or the property line. Um, again, we're, we're looking at about forty-five, uh, service line issues, uh, throughout a year. And again, those, the cost of those repairs, um, could be several thousands of dollars, depending on where the, where the, uh, the break occurs. Uh, again, you could be looking at replacing, replacing parts of the street, uh, it, it could be a deep line, it could be in your neighbor's backyard, there's, so there's, again, it varies on, on what the cost, the cost of those repairs are, but it, it could be several thousand dollars.
What would a low number be, eighty-five?
Low is probably a thousand dollars, high is maybe five thousand dollars.
Didn't you come up with an average-ish number for that?
I would say that averages around three. So if, if we look at the, if we look at the private homeowners', uh, insurance, again, there, there are pros and cons to all of these, but, uh, again, what the private homeowners' insurance provides, uh, again, is voluntary, it, it's only up to the, the resident, if they want to participate, they can. Um, they have the ability to choose what level of coverage, um, i- is out there. And it would, it would entail or would cover the entire service line, which is good. Um, and, and this is probably the cheapest option, uh, that we have to provide and, uh, to, to, for, for this issue.
Yeah, and I keep emphasizing the property line, the entire service line, when you do it, it goes from, from your house to, to the main, it's everything. It doesn't have anything to do with where your meter is, it doesn't have anything to do with where your property line is, the insurance pays the whole thing, right, Jack?
Yes, that's correct. But some cons with that one, um, again, obviously, it's still putting some of the responsibility, the responsibility back on the, on the, the resident or the customer for this. And as we found, um, it might not be available for all, uh, insurance coverages. So again, it, it doesn't, it's not, like I said, there is a chance that it might not be available for, for certain individuals, depending on what your homeowner insurance coverage is. So, next one. The next one was the National League of Cities, uh, again, it's also, it could be a voluntary increase, it'd be up to the, the customer, the residential, or the, the customer, it's determined they want to, to participate. Uh, and again, also, it covers the entire service line, uh, would be from the main to the, to the, to the house. Um, the thing about this one is it is, it, it's specifically tailored to service lines, so it's a, it's kind of a tried and true program. Um, it's been, it's used in many cities across the United States, so it, uh, it is a successful program. Um, again, cost of that one was like six seventy-five per month, but they also offer the ability to do the interior plumbing in your house for nine dollars. So again, there are different levels of coverage that you would be, uh, you'd be eligible for. Um, the cons with this one, again, obviously, it still remains with the homeowner's responsibility. Uh, again, we're starting to, uh, uh, the, it, these are more increases than maybe what a resident is comfortable with. Uh, and probably one big issue with this one being that it's not necessarily administered or administered locally. Um, it is a, it is a national program, and so it, uh, it's not something that would potentially have a whole lot of local control to it, so. Next one. If we look at the city taking on responsibility up to the, to the, the water meter or the, or the, the, uh, or the property line, um, again, this would be an increase in city services, we're probably providing additional services. Uh, it would help us control, uh, work on water loss issues. Uh, again, benefits would give us more control over our system. Um, again, this would be the more expensive, uh, of the options. Um, so the cons to it would be that this is kind of a mandatory, uh, increase. You wouldn't have the ability to say, no, I don't wanna protect this, you know, this, this program, this would be charged to all of our customers equally. Um, there is an increase in staff equipment and material, uh, it's not, it's not a service that we don't currently provide. Uh, and then the one thing about, there are two big issues with, with this one is that once we change the level of responsibility, it would be extremely difficult to ever, to go back and say, okay, now that's no longer, that's our responsibility, that's back on the customer. So it would be very difficult to, to, to move backwards. And, and again, as Steve was kind, kinda said, the issue with this one though is that it only is going to fix issues with service lines that are, would be in the right of way. So, you know, we say from the main to the meter, well, if the meter's in somebody's basement, it doesn't go all the way to somebody's basement, it just goes to the edge of the property line, because we cannot do work on private property. So, again, we, we often use the example of, of a, a situation we had up here on Sixth Street. Well, unfortunately, this, this option would not solve that problem. Because the, the, where that break was at, it was in the neighbor's backyard, across two neighbor's house, so it, it wouldn't have solved that issue. So again, we wanna make sure it's very clear that if the city were to take on responsibility, we're still only taking on responsibility to the property line. And mo, in general cases, that's typically where we put the meter in new construction.
Right, that's what I was gonna emphasize, newer houses, you, you have the main, and then just decide the property, like, you have the meter. So the city takes care of it to the meter, but that's just kind of a couple of feet. And the, and then the owner has responsibility from the, uh, meter to the house. The problem that we've got is that's a new construction, in many of the old houses, where we have the most leaky, what the problem is, it can be many hundreds of feet, uh, of the line that we've got right now. So, sometimes a meter could be inside the house, and sometimes it could be out near the main, we just, it, it's just a wide variety of things. So, if we take this on, you're, you're fixing mostly the old property. Ideally, as we would repair them and, and replace them and put new lines in, to put the meters right inside the property line as close to the main as we could, but we don't have that choice.
Next slide, Steve? So, basically, staff's recommendation, um, again, like I said in the beginning, we want an increased education. Um, and like I said, we, we can, we can make some additions to our utility application, again, basically, show people a picture of who you're responsible for, uh, again, so promote awareness on, on, on the situation. And then also, we wanna promote awareness of possible, uh, insurance coverages. Um, I, 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 I think it would be a good, a good opportunity for the city to also look at the National League Cities, get with them, have them, have them start doing that. What they would do essentially is they would, uh, they would acquire a list from the city, so they would send out a mailing to all of our customers. And so, even in, in that, if the customer doesn't want to, to take advantage of that program, again, at least providing more, uh, information, bringing, uh, something out there, and again, it makes more people ask questions, and again, then they could even go back to their, their private insurance and talk, and talk to them about if they wanna do something there. And then I think that the last one is, is very important, that, uh, that, you know, we continue to construct new mains to help eliminate some of these service lines, um, as funds are available. I mean, currently, you know, as we, as we go through the year and we, and we get into summer, we realize we've got, we've got some funds left over, well, then we look to install, you know, one block here and a block there of water main to eliminate these, these long service lines. And so, again, we wanna keep doing that, but again, it's as long as we have funds available to do that.
How many years have you been able to do that with extra funds?
We haven't done it the last couple of years.
Come on, two.
Two.
And what you were doing, how much would you do?
Um, it, it, it depends, um, we, we've done anywhere from, usually around two to three blocks.
And how many blocks on the council?
I don't know.
A lot, I would say?
A lot.
I bet that's that, that's how many blocks we've got in town.
So, so again, what, what we, what we would do is, uh, we, we would take blocks where we'd have two or three long service lines or an area where we, we've seen issues, we would install a main there and hope that the property owners hook up.
Hope?
Hope.
Hope. Hope.
Could you kind of explain a little bit more of that?
Because it's, because it's not, we could just provide the, the water main, it's up to them to, to, to hook up to it.
Do they, I'm just curious, do they, do they know that, of course they're gonna know, water main's gonna be installed, are they gonna be, do they, are they asked?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
Have you already told the alternatives or what could possibly be happening?
Well, I mean, uh, most of the time, the, the, you know, they're, well, you might have one that has an issue. The neighbor, if they don't have an issue, they're, they're questioning, well, I don't have a problem now, why don't you need to hook up? Well, you might have a problem in the future, here it is.
And so you do explain that?
Yes, oh yes, yes.
Here's my challenge with that, um, that statement, as funds are available, those funds have always been available. As we set the rates, we have been unwilling to change the rates. And so consequently, you've got a hundred, the sixty, five-year-old account, whatever it is, with continually deferred maintenance, line loss around one to three gallons, if I remember right, something like that. So we're not keeping up. The, the deferred maintenance continues to pile up, and our water rates are gonna jump up. So to me, the big focus is, are we gonna concentrate on fixing these holes in the line and trying to reduce this? Uh, so, um, I would see insurance coverage doing that, and with the story of like not wanting to press our water to maintain the systems, is that, is that an accurate portrayal?
Yes, you, you're, yes, we, the utilities are fortunate that we have the ability, yes, and you have the ability to, to, to raise rates, to, to, to fund these other projects, yes.
So it's not a matter of funds being available, it's a matter of political will?
Well, yeah.
I may have a lot of friends who have.
I'm gonna come back again without answering that question. But what I did want to say is, when we construct new water mains, what we want to do is we want to put new water mains, uh, in front of houses and then put the, uh, the meter two or three feet inside of it. I think most of you, uh, if you have a, a, a new house, you go out in the front yard, and there's the, the, the meter right in front of your house, and it's three or four feet back from the sidewalk. And so what we're gonna do is we'll be able to construct that everywhere, and then the city would maintain it to the main. The property owner maintains it, I mean, to the meter, and then the property owner would maintain it for the property line, but essentially, the main is every property line. So they would maintain it from there to the house. That's the way we'd like to make everyone work. But I don't know how many, how many we've got in town, half that way, Zach? What, what have we got, maybe?
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it's probably a little more, it's more than half, but we, we do, we have a lot of, a lot of meters that are still in basements, uh, things of that nature. So, um, again, there's still a lot that, that again, that aren't, that are, don't have the meter out there by the, by the sidewalk or by the property line.
So, so you're saying that we should just hike the, the water prices, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that none of us like to raise the prices, it is not a popular thing. But if you have an old system that it has decades of deferred or maintenance, we know we're losing one out of every three gallons. We know we're not keeping up. If a couple of years we're not doing anything, another year we're doing a walk or two. And so as the system continues to degrade, at what point does the future council have to address it? Like five out of ten gallons? I'm simply saying that it's, it's a decision that none of us like. But if the price of water is gonna be going up, to me, I would want to be plugging as many of the bigger holes as possible. And the only way that's gonna happen is if we maintain the system, which we, we're the only one with interest. The insurance companies care less, they're profit centers. We're the ones that care. Uh, and so if you're playing the long game, if you're gonna be here for years and decades, you want your water system not to leak. So, I mean, to me, that's, that's the big question all the way through the service line thing is, are we going to, particularly with water rates going up? I mean, we've always had pretty darn cheap water, and we've always kind of just taken it down directly. But water's going up, do we want to plug these leaks, or do we just want to continue to do business as well?
Well, I agree with that to some extent. And here's the extent that I don't agree, is that that's fine if we're sitting here just talking about service lines. But when we open up the whole big picture, we're not just talking about service lines, we're talking about new sewer system, we're talking about rates when we get the pipeline. And we're just gonna jack the price up to a dollar. I think there are gonna be a lot of people that can actually love that.
I do too.
But that's where I, I mean, you can't just sit here and talk about service lines and not think about everything else that's coming down the road. And if you do, you mean irresponsible. Because we've got all these other things that are coming down the road. And we've got to look at them, not just one piece of it.
And, and whatever the council decides is great. I'm just simply saying, I, I want us to all make an informed decision, we talked about this in an open session, so that if, if we decide to do nothing, that's fine. If we decide to go the insurance route, that's fine. I just want everybody understanding, this is, this is part of the whole picture. It's service line and it's line loss, and like you say, it's, it's the sewer issues, and it's all going up. Part of this has happened because we haven't, uh, there's deferred maintenance, some of it is imposed on us by DNR and other things. It's a combination of things. And, and so, um, as long as we're making an informed decision, whatever the council wants to do.
Okay, so, all the, all the insurances that we've talked about, they're unable to fix a leak. If the city has the responsibility of now going from the meter to the main, they're the ones that are going to, when there's a leak, get rid of the long service line and goes to wherever, and then make it a, a direct hit, correct?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
May, maybe it would be where you can, in some places you can do that. We had some recently here, uh, that we had to do that, and we were able to do that if you had a main there. Some places you may, may not have a main.
And none of those are gonna address if it's the line loss of the old line, service lines that are going through five feet of yards, or I'm assuming is where your biggest potential loss is, the old, old neighborhood.
Right.
That none of this is going to cover, except for the insurance.
And it just covers the hole?
Right.
But, yes, that, that's 100% correct. And, and then it goes to Danny's point. If the city wants to address that, then we need to invest money into the infrastructure to put in a new main to, to, to eliminate the need for the long service line. So I, I agree that we need to spend more money on our infrastructure, and again, that's, again, that, that's gonna be continual and now and forever, we're going to have to spend money on infrastructure to keep it up, up to speed. But I don't think that by increasing our responsibility just for service lines, that we see the return on our investment. We, we could spend that money better by in, in, improving our system as opposed to taking on additional responsibilities.
Then figure out a way to entice if they're gonna do a main in front of your house, just spend, I don't know how much it costs, but they'll hook on it instead of running.
Yeah, and, and I think, I think that's definitely an option, I think that's definitely an option that, that staff is going to look and see how we can do some type of a, you know, similar to a, the, the streetscape program that we have, where it's a, it's a match or some. I, I think that's definitely something that we, that we look into. So when an individual has that situation, we can say, here, here, here's a grand opportunity to the city that we can help entice you to get rid of that old service line and, and either hook on here, or again, to provide some assistance to our customers without us taking on the responsibility.
Okay, I, uh, okay, so, how, we're about fifty-two plus rentals in the city, correct?
Fifty-eight percent.
Yes, they're about. Okay, so we're talking about raising everybody's water bill up to try to fix some of our service lines. Since fifty-two percent of people that live in these houses are renters, is it fair for them to foot the bill for what landlords would be footing, should be footing the bill for?
Well, our rates would have to support our system. So, so if, if, again, if that's an additional responsibility of the city, then all of our customers have to pay for it equally.
There's maybe another way. Have you ever heard of landlord permits?
No.
Do you?
Well, yeah, some cities, uh, do that, and what happens is, uh, the, in order to, to rent property, you have to be, have the property inspected by the, uh, by the city, and, uh, that usually is, uh, is kind of a drive-by, it's outside inspection. And, uh, then there's a fee usually charged. I have an example of it, it's fifty dollars a year for rentals, and that is a rental permit. And it involves a, a s- mostly city inspection, then you get a permit for rent. We, I think we've talked about this sometime in the city, and, and I don't think it's ever been favorably received, but that is one way in which, uh, in which the, the landlords then, uh, contribute to this as well as, as the customer gives the want.
Is that fifty dollars per landlord fee per rental property?
Per property. But it, that's, that's not for utilities?
No, it's just a landlord fee.
Okay, because again, my, the rate that we charge, we have to charge the same, whether it's a rental property or a homeowner, we have to charge the same rate.
Right, but what I'm saying is that fifty-two percent, this is something that needs to be flushed, fifty-two percent won't have their rates increase until the water pipeline, because the rest of the, the people who actually own land, own their houses, and landlords, which all of them are responsible for their lands, their buildings, and their water pipelines, they're the ones that are burdening this, being burdened on it, not the people that live in it. It's just a thought.
Yeah, but, but, but what, how, how we would generate the money to do this has to come through rates. And I can't charge a different rate to somebody.
Is your enterprise.
Yeah, so again, what, the rate, it has to be uniform across the board, I, so I can't.
You could put the money in the enterprise.
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be, now that, that would be, I'm assuming that'd be a general fund revenue.
Why does the money have to come to the enterprise system?
Because it's a, the utilities are an enterprise fund.
I understand that, but why does the money to pay for the service lines have to come from the enterprise system?
Oh, I think you could do the same thing you're asking, yes.
I'm fine.
Yeah, no, and, yeah, the utility fund money has to be spent on utility fund-related issues.
Okay.
The, the, the general fund can, can give money to anybody.
Right.
Okay, so here's my question. Are service lines considered infrastructure? I've been asking that for two weeks, so I think I have an answer by now. Are infra- are service lines infrastructure? Have we found that out yet?
Well, my answer is yes.
Well, that's, okay, your answer is yes, but what I think the answer is wrong.
I've been wrong.
Is your answer wrong, or do you know?
What we'll do is we can go back and we can, uh, get some, uh, some specific answers, get some legal precedents, and see what, how you wanna, how we'll recall it. I know, I, I understand where you're going.
Yeah, I know you do, because you talked about it. I mean, you want me to eat alone, or you want me to talk about it?
No, I wouldn't.
On this program at all?
How wide is our trail?
How wide?
How wide?
It's, uh, it's, it's six feet wide with an additional two feet of, uh, chip, uh, mulch on each side, or on one side, for mountain bike use and things like that. And we would continue with it, this all, this whole phase is gonna be ADA compliant. So, and so far, we've done, done it.
Okay, so on this map, on that kind of red pink line? Okay, so to the west, not along the Magan River, is that where we're picking up where the trail ends right now?
Yes.
And coming around there, are, when you say elevated or whatever, and talking about that?
This portion will not be elevated, this is gonna be hard surface asphalt. And, uh, it's with the contour, and this, I don't believe in your copies of topographical, but it, there's a pretty steep incline there. So we're gonna hug that terrain as it elevates rather, rather cut in, to make it ADA. You know, with the grade has to be such an ADA that anybody with a wheelchair can, can manipulate it. So we, we have to be pretty careful in this area, how we go about doing it. So from that point where you see it ends, it's kind of a marshy area from there to the, the corner point where we plan on meeting Phase Three, so, and at that point, we'll probably have to go elevated or lots of drainage ditches and things like that, drainage elevators.
Those are questions, why, why is that, that lenient foot price that I'm just curious?
Well, asphalt, uh, grade work, rock.
I mean, is it more than grade work? Because I mean, I, I know, like, standard today, it's about six bucks a, a square foot for concrete.
Yeah, well.
But you're also talking about accessibility, so I'm gonna get in trouble there.
And this dirt work project, this part of it, is gonna be pretty extensive just because of, it drops several feet. And we have to, we can't just go straight down, we have to hug that where.
It's like less than.
It can, yes, it's, it's one percent is what it is, so, yeah. Any other questions on this project, comments?
I just did want to add that, uh, when we get this done and up to the corner that Steve was talking about, that leaves us about a thousand feet yet to do to connect the two points. And that is, uh, some of the toughest area because of Steve said that's literally low lying and marshing, so we're gonna have to figure out how to engineer our way around that. But we, we've closed the gap here with a thousand feet.
How many, how much of a good is our area around some of, some of the non- or including what we already got in that corner?
The twenty twenty-one, uh, I'm sorry, didn't bring that with me, but I believe it's roughly point seven-five miles, I believe. So that connects where, over where the new bridge is, behind, all the way to the, the corner point where we're gonna have to figure something out there. So, and that's, we are receiving grant funding for that, and we're, we're working towards that, we've been approved for that, so. So basically, the current ground I'm working on will, at this point, and then we'll have to go for a Phase Five, close the gap.
Okay, so.
So we're maybe three quarters or seven eighths of the way, can you get? I have lots of people asking about that, they go out and they start at the, uh, parking area and back when they go, and they go all the way back around, and then turn around and they come back and then that, when they're gonna be able to go all the way around, and I tell them.
If there's no other further questions or comments, we'll go ahead and proceed above. All those in favor of passing Resolution Twenty Twenty-two dash twelve to sign, I'm sorry, uh, Twenty Twenty-two dash eleven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, zero opposed. Next item on the agenda, Resolution Twenty Twenty-two dash twelve.
Resolution Twenty Twenty-two dash twelve, a resolution for the city of Cameron, Missouri to accept a proposal for Smith and Loveless equipment from Ray Lindsay Company.
Chair, entertain a motion to pass Resolution Twenty Twenty-two dash twelve. Same, an open second discussion, Director?
Verlin Giveth, I'll take it away, so, uh, but, uh, what, what this resolution tonight here is to, uh, to replace the, um, the, the grid classifier pump at the headworks at our waste bar treatment plant. Uh, it was something that we had hoped that we could put off until, uh, the project.
Uh, it was something that we could hope that we could put off until, uh, the project. Uh, but unfortunately, despite the best efforts from Keith and his crew, we couldn't, the bailing wire and stuff were out, and we weren't able to keep it going for the project, so we need to go ahead and get this ordered. Uh, but again, like I said, this was included with our, with our projects, so these funds were, were included in the, in the twenty twenty-two, uh, project. Uh, but again, like I said, this will be replacing the existing spent levels there with the, with the new, uh, grid classifier and pumps.
Questions, comments? Any? Okay, we'll go ahead and proceed above, all in favor of passing Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, Director. Okay, that concludes your business, and the next item on our agenda is our second public participation. If anybody wishes to address the council, who's come to the podium, their name, their address, and we give them five minutes to address the council. Okay? Saying none, we will, uh, the next item will be miscellaneous comments from the staff, let's start, come on.
Um, just want to let everyone know, I will be out of the office next Tuesday and Wednesday, uh, attending the MML Legislative Conference in Jackson City. So if you guys have anything that you would like me to look into, let me know before I go, and I'll come back and update when I find out. Um, I did get contacted today, um, by someone who, I guess, organizes the committees, but Representative Brailsback has sponsored Hospital twenty-one twenty-nine for the cities of Cameron and Hamilton to be able to have a hotel, hotel tax, and requested a fiscal note we submitted, and that has been done for the city. Um, and as we saw earlier on the agenda, the Chamber has requested a license for their Chamber banquet on Friday, April first. It's going to be old school, and I'll just need to know who wants to attend, just want to make appropriations. That's all I have.
Manager?
Nothing further, thank you.
Okay. Correct. Chief Wolden, anything?
No, sir.
Chief?
Nothing.
Okay, all right, well, we've covered the staff. Uh, next is comments from the council, council? Council?
I don't have any. I want to say thanks for all the staff that have had to step up with dirt being on, because I know it's been, uh, kind of interesting to kind of do that. So, uh, thank you for the hard work, and the future hard work you guys are going to be doing, uh, getting that, keeping the parks going with the new projects. So I know that's going to be a deal for you. That's all I have.
Uh, congratulations to our three state qualifying lady wrestlers, Lady Dragons, high school girls. I'm pretty excited watching that, their girl side of wrestling evolve quickly. Ted?
Thank you.
Yes, they are.
Well, on, again, on behalf of all of us, we want to thank, uh, Mrs. Pratt and the directors for all the work that they've done to improve this community. I also want to extend my thanks to the council, and the manager, and the staff. Uh, service line, all, all these kind of things that are, cost money, that are not popular. Uh, kicking the can down the road is, is never a good idea. Uh, if, if at all possible, address problems when they're smaller. And I appreciate the fact that we've had, uh, these conversations, even though they're not popular. Uh, but we'll keep working forward, and, uh, I think you had a, a great idea on the new stacks, and we'll hope that, that has some, has some real possibilities to solve a problem, or improve the problem. We'll build that. Okay, so, uh, that, that's it for me, we do now have an executive session, and so Chair would entertain a motion, and then we turn?
Same.
Same.
Open second, all in favor of adjourned, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, zero opposed, and standing, sir. Thank you all for coming.